All right, well, we're gonna go ahead and get ourselves started here. So I do want to do quick introductions of our NWSRA staff that are on as well as our expert from WT Engineering. So, welcome. Thank you all for joining us for our town hall meeting regarding our ADA transition plan in our facility spaces. My name is Andrea Griffin and I'm the superintendent of recreation here at Northwest Special Rec. Tom?
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Draper and I am the superintendent of marketing and communications here at NWSRA.
Darlene?
Hi, everybody. I am Darlene Negriello, superintendent of administrative services with NWSRA.
And then we have Tracy. You wanna take it?
Hi, I'm Tracy Crawford. I'm the executive director here at NWSRA. Believe it or not, it was 12 years. I can't believe that. I cannot believe. I feel like I was just saying yes to this yesterday and 12 years has passed. Um, I think that is my cue to kind of do welcoming and then you and I are doing that. So first, I want to thank you for coming to this and tell you a little bit about why we're doing this. NWSRA was to say here in Illinois. In Illinois, I'm so proud to be a park and recreation professional here in the state of Illinois. We have a a state-recognized distinguished agency program that recognizes agencies that don't just meet the minimum criteria, but strive for excellence or outstanding programs and services. Um, and so NWSRA, I'm proud to say, was a distinguished agency recipient prior to me and now it is time for us to renew. With that renewal, it challenges us always to go through a specific set of standards to make sure that we're meeting. Uh, like I said, not just the minimal requirements, but striving for the best that we can offer our community. And one of those things is that we take an opportunity to do our ADA compliance um, and make sure that we do a whole self-assessment and then we want to step further. Um, although all of my staff are qualified professionals, certified therapeutic recreation specialists, um, along with other fields. We really took a step further and I got a chance to work with my mentor again, John McGovern and his company that specializes in doing uh, American with Disability or ADA access audits and also program audits. To see how well we're addressing um, inclusion and access. Prior to, and it's so funny, I I'm looking at John, but when we first did this with you, we did not have all six of our programming sites. Um, I think we just had one. Um, and now, looking back, we've grown and so that is really the impetus of us sending out the survey about all six of our programming sites that are located right in the heart of the park district communities. And that was, we, we, we really worked hard to do that. You know what, Tom? Can you pull up and find our regional approach? Each one of our program spaces are located, um, we're dividing up our footprint, our 17 into six regions. Um, we heard what you were saying if you were a part of our last strategic plan and it came across loud and clear that you wanted to be able to receive services within your community. In other words, you didn't want to get in the car and drive five hours to get to Zumba. That was 45 minutes to drive, you know, five hours back. I'm exaggerating, but with traffic, sometimes I feel like it is five hours. Um, so we've worked hard and we've made sure, um, working with our partner agencies to make sure that we have programming spaces in each of our six regions and um, Tom will show you what those regions are. Uh, maybe when you and Andrea start going into, oh, he got, look at this. At Tom. So if you look at your screen, you see our programming spaces, um, all pretty color-coded. Each area represents um, one of our regions. Streamwood, Bartlett, Hanover Park and our programming space is located in Hanover Park. Um, our next area is South Barrington, Hoffman and Schaumburg and our program space is located in Hoffman Estates. Inverness Palatine, Salt Creek. Um, and our programming space is located, wait, is that Rolling Meadows? Yes. And Rolling Meadows. Um, it's not written on there, but that's Rolling Meadows, um, which is where our main office is located as well as our very first programming space. And then the yellow is Arlington Heights and Buffalo Grove and the programming space is located in Buffalo Grove. Um, we have Elk Grove and Mount Prospect. The programming space is in Mount Prospect. And then the last one is Wheeling, Prospect Heights and River Trails and the programming space is located in Wheeling. So, thank you, Tom. We need to get Rolling Meadows written on there somewhere, or it's teeny and I can't see it. So, those are all of our programming spaces. Um, so we're gonna be talking about, I, I said all that to say that our ADA transition plan that we received um, is for our main office. Okay, so does that make sense? John works with, I don't know how many of our 17, but because we don't own the programming space within those facilities, they do the ADA audit that covers our space as well. Does that make sense to everybody? So, we do the space we own. We own the two floors in Park Central, but the park districts and if they don't, McGovern, they should, um, be doing our programming space as well. Um, cause we're an extension. The only weird one where we're all by ourselves and we have the whole Vogelai House um, is in Hoffman Estates. They're doing a whole new campus. Um, so I'm sure McGovern will be out there to do some ADA as well. Any questions so far? I'm, I just want to kind of set the stage and why we're doing this, why it's so important we get feedback. Uh, we did send out a survey. We got almost 80 participants to give us feedback, so that is extremely exciting about our programming spaces. But today, our ADA compliance transition plan is really gonna focus on our programming, our, not, our office space, which is the second and third floor of Park Central, which is the Rolling Meadows, um, where we kind of own it together. We own Park Central and then we own the second and third floors. Together, we um, manage and, and handle the bottom floor, which is like our boardroom and, and that kind of stuff. So, any questions so far? Feel free to put anything in the chat, although I say that and I'm awful in tracking it. Now I have it open. All right, hearing none. Andrea, I'm gonna pass it to you. Is there anything you want to add?
So, no, nope, not at all. So I would like to take the second to introduce John McGovern. He is with WT Engineering and he is the gentleman who came out and did our transition plan for our office space. So, John, would you like to take it away?
Sure. Thanks Andrea. Thanks Tracy. As Andrea said, my name is John McGovern. I lead the accessibility practice at the WT Group. And we help park districts, cities, states, counties, villages, school districts comply with the, maybe sometimes not so crystal-clear requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. I worked in local government. Tracy and I worked together many years ago. And we started this company in 2008 and since then, we've served more than 500 units of local government and helped them make their sites accessible to and inclusive of people who have disabilities. Tracy talked a little bit about the requirements of the ADA for park districts and so I want to address that before I put the PowerPoint up for our look at the NW administrative offices. So, park districts and school districts and cities and villages, they have this same obligation and it's not part of an accreditation requirement. Congress wanted units of local government to do more regarding accessibility and to do it sooner than businesses and nonprofits, for example. So if you've got a favorite coffee house or a restaurant, they don't have to make things as accessible as quickly as a park district does. So, in, in a way, that makes sense. Uh, park districts are paid for to a great extent with local property taxes and Congress thought that entities like that should really lead the way. So, there is a cutoff. You don't have to have a transition plan unless you have 50 employees. But even some of the smallest park districts at NWSRA have, at least as a smart practice, adopted a transition plan. And I'll talk a little bit about what that is when I jump into the PowerPoint. Tracy suggested putting things in the chat. I'm a little less formal than that and if you want to just jump right in when you have a question, that is fine with me if I can get the PowerPoint to the beginning. There we go. I'll make sure that Andrea, that you and Tracy and the team have this. I'll send it over after the meeting ends at 7:30 tonight, right? So, you already met the NW staff, but it would help me to have brief introductions by those of you in the audience. So, Sherry Fritchy, you're the first person that I see. Can you tell us who you are and why you're here at this meeting?
Yeah, um, my name is Sherry and I used to be with NWSRA for about 12 years and I just moved.
Well, welcome to the meeting. Maureen, I see your name next.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I can't seem to get my picture on there. I'm having problems with the video part of it. I, I, I can't figure it out. I'm sorry.
No worries, no worries.
I, I have been, not myself, but my daughter who has autism, has been with uh, NWSRA for 40 years. When she was five years old and she's going to be 45 next month. I found out about this program through my case manager, uh, Julie, and she thought I might be interested in listening to this.
Well, thanks for joining us. Shirley, how about you? You're next on my screen.
My name's Shirley Sains. I'm a parent. My daughter Savannah attends the Pursuit Program at Vog, I don't know how to say it, Vogelai. Yeah, and uh, she's in a wheelchair, so um, much different issues, but so far it's been working. Little bit of a question. I don't remember how big that elevator is, but I was trying to decide if it was a personal size or a a business size, cause I, I think there's been some questions about, um, you know.
As big as we could get in, we really tried to look at the floor space and what we could do on the first floor and put an elevator in, so it was quite, it was as big as we could get without being a chairlift and not taking the entire first floor. So, that was the tricky part. Yeah.
Cause I know it was mentioned to me, it's like, you know, it can be tricky, so.
Well, great. Thanks for joining us and pepper me with questions as we go through this. Dan Tepperman, you're next on my screen.
Ah, yes. Uh, can I, can everyone hear me? Good, good. Sometimes I'm on mute by accident, so good. I just want to make sure. Um, uh, my son Scott Tepperman is, uh, the, I got an invitation. Um, my son Scott has a severe autism and is non-verbal and and requires a one-on-one aid. Uh, so that was, and I was invited through NWSRA email and I thought, wow, that's really good because you know, accessibility is so important and I know his needs are great. And so I just wanted to be available to, just to learn more about what, what opportunities there are and also what, what can I do as a parent, uh, to help facilitate uh, more participation in terms of staffing.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for coming. Next, I see TB. That's an easy one for me to pronounce.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Browning. I am the mother of Tori. She's 22 years old. She has Prader-Willi syndrome as well as autism. And she's been attending various NWSRA activities since we moved to Illinois in 2016. Um, like Dan, I received an email invitation, so I'm just here to learn more. Um, and accessibility for us, just, um, Prader-Willi is a very unique syndrome and comes with its own challenges. So sometimes it's not so much a physical side as far as um, accessibility. It's more, it, it's different. For, for example, you know, accessibility to food. I won't go into more about Prader-Willi, but at any rate, um, thank you for having us.
Thanks for joining. Bessa, I'm afraid I'm gonna completely destroy your last name, but I'll say Satiku.
I'm Bessa. I'm, um, I have used your services, uh, daycare. My son is 10 and he's ADHD and autistic and, um, I meet, uh, I met the Rachel and I meet with her a lot on Rotary, uh, Rotary, Schaumburg and Hoffman and I do like to follow you guys and all the services really that you offer. And when I saw this, like joining from, you know, Zoom, I'm like, oh, that's easy because I'm not too far, but I've been on the meetings all day and I just, the reason I join is just to see, you know, really to learn more. And my son is verbal, but he gets an IEP. Well, he was very, very defiant, you know, like. And even when I brought him there, he had good experience, but the last couple of times, like, no, no, I'm not going. So I just tried to kind of learn more about all the services. Thank you for all you do, really.
Well, thanks for joining. And last on my list is Gail Mitchell.
Okay, I'm Gail Mitchell and I'm an inclusion aide with NWSRA. And I started at the beginning of August and I've joined this meeting to learn a little bit more about the place that I work for and truly enjoy.
Thanks to all of you for attending. I'm going to start this PowerPoint up now and try to do this relatively quickly. So in 2018, uh, NWSRA retained us to do three things. One was an access audit of the facility in Rolling Meadows and so that included everything, parking, restrooms, the elevator and so forth. Uh, second was community engagement to see if there were any preferences or priorities on behalf of people with disabilities with regard to the order in which things are fixed. Is it most important to have the elevator at Park Central compliant or is parking more important? So, relatively simple, uh, things like that make a big difference. And then lastly was to put together the phased retrofit schedule, which is called the transition plan. So again, this is required of units of local government or instrumentalities of local government. And NWSRA is certainly, if you want to think of it this way, a tool that the park districts use to help provide services. So, a little bit about the ADA, but specifically about how it relates to buildings and facilities. So, everybody knows likely that it was, it became effective on January 26 of 1992. So the ADA is about 31 and a half years old right now. It's still a pretty new civil right and it provides protections for people with disabilities in a variety of areas, including employment, privately-owned businesses, telecommunications, and then certainly state and local government services like park districts and NWSRA. Employment has arguably been the, the big failure here. The employment rate for people with disabilities in 31 years has increased by only 1%. From 67% unemployed to 66% unemployed. So, that's arguably been the least effective part of the ADA. You, though, are the most effective part of the ADA. Units of local government have really embraced the need to make parks and facilities accessible and to include and provide services to facilitate inclusion. Uh, people with disabilities in programs alongside people who don't have a disability. Title II is pretty sweeping in its language. It covers everything that NW provides from a service perspective, so not just programs, but also transportation. And of course, it addresses the facility or facilities, I should say, throughout the regions. There is some crystal-clear requirements. One of those is in regard to the design and construction of new sites. So, if it is a, a brand-new site that's being designed and constructed, it has to fully comply with the state requirements or the federal requirements, whichever is more stringent. And in the bottom bullet point, I'll tell you that Illinois is more stringent. In 2018, Illinois got tired of waiting for that presidential administration to issue the outdoor recreation standards for trails, campsites, picnic areas, beaches and so forth. And so Illinois adopted those as part of the state code. So today, the state Illinois Accessibility Code is broader and more stringent than the federal requirements. Why audit facilities? Well, really, it's the bottom bullet point. It's just the right thing to do. NWSRA and its partner park districts want to make sure that the benefits of recreation are available both to people without a disability as well as to people who do have a disability. From a practical perspective, a lot of park and recreation assets were built before the ADA. And let's be candid, people with disabilities weren't necessarily in the mind of the designers and the construction crews. Uh, it's also helpful for NWSRA to have this transition plan because as it does other projects or the park districts do other projects, they can address it in an ongoing way. We used pretty simple tools when we did our work. Uh, we've created checklists that address every type of asset at a facility. Uh, those include both the federal and state requirements as well as smart practices. Uh, the tools we use are pretty simple. It's a two-foot digital level, a tape measure, a door pressure gauge and either a laptop or a smartphone that has the app on it that we have developed for accessibility. We do believe in checklists. Look, brain surgeons use checklists, rocket scientists use checklists. And I'm not trying to say that accessibility in buildings is rocket science, but if it's good enough for them to use checklists, we're gonna use checklist too. The checklist helped the owner of the property make sure that we did indeed see everything. So, what the heck is a transition plan? I talked about it a little bit earlier. It's really a a phased schedule of when retrofits are going to occur, but the goal is to make the programs accessible. So, don't think of a program as a thing that you have signed up one of your children for or Sherry, something that you've signed up for on your own. Instead, a program is an opportunity. So it can be a recreation program. But me grabbing a sandwich and sitting in a park in Rolling Meadows at a picnic table and eating lunch, I better do that before the weather changes. That's a program. That's an opportunity. So picnic tables are a program. Playgrounds are a program. Uh, heck, sidewalks are a program from a village perspective. So, think broadly here because that's the way the ADA defines program. A key is dispersion. Um, so, the approach that NW is taking with the establishment of the regions is really consistent with this notion that no matter where I live, within the 17 communities, I'm still gonna have access to certain types of recreation assets in parks and in facilities. There is pretty clear language from the Department of Justice. Not necessarily every recurring site has to be made accessible, so think about playgrounds. If I'm Schaumburg Park District and I have 45 playgrounds, is it enough to me to make just one playground accessible? I don't think so. But do I have to make all 45 accessible? I don't think so, again, there. So, the Department of Justice won't give the Schaumburg Park District a ratio or a percentage, but we will. We tell our communities to aim for a minimum of one of every three and then of course, as they make sites new by replacing an old playground, that has to be fully accessible. The question always comes up about how long can the transition plan be stretched out? If it is parks and recreation only, we try to keep it to eight to 11 years. Uh, we have seen some transition plans that include streets and sidewalks and correctional facilities and police departments and fire stations that go for 20 years or more. Couple of factors here and I'm gonna go through some of these pretty quickly. One is the severity of the barriers, so um, I'll use a village example. If there's a sidewalk on one side of the street, but not on the other side of the street, that's an ADA issue. So the lack of that sidewalk is a severe barrier. Opposite that is low-hanging fruit. So, things that are easy to do like moving a garbage can or recycle bin out of the door maneuvering clearance at a facility. All it takes is about a minute of staff awareness for that to be solved every day. Uh, we've seen more and more communities say, hey, we want to make a higher priority the retrofits at our most frequently used sites. There's nothing wrong with taking that approach. Um, and then we've also seen some communities say, we would prefer that we invest our money in public spaces first over spaces used only by employees. And again, there's nothing wrong with that approach either. Couple of others to consider are how recent the construction is. Again, if it's new construction and it fails, that's a higher priority for retrofit. Um, if it's a repurposed site, Vogelai is a good example. Vogelai has probably been five different things, if not more during its lifetime. Uh, those tend to be more complex sites to make accessible. Uh, we also look at whether there's a partner. Uh, if there is a partner, like there is in the, as I always think of it, the NWSRA Rolling Meadows condo operation, then you've got to get your partner on the same page with you as to when retrofits will occur and who will pay for them. That leads to complex or costly retrofits as well. Uh, we just did a report for another jurisdiction that has 27 trail segments that are non-compliant. All of those are million-dollar projects. So that's a $27 million project just for one type of asset. Still more. This changed when Illinois acted in 2018, but in other states, there are a lot of outdoor recreation assets that are not yet subject to a design standard. Historic sites do have to be audited, but do not have to be changed if the change would threaten or destroy the historic significance. And then last but not least, for the environmentalists amongst us, sites that have other protections like for endangered uh, flora or fauna, those two have an exception with regard to meeting the technical requirements. Talked about park district transition plans, so I won't go into this, but I, I will just mention that the goal here, of course, is to make certain that a park district has its pools, its parks, its golf courses, its sports fields and courts and everything else that they provide, available to and usable by people with disabilities. If I have a disability and I want to cheat at golf, I ought to be able to do that at a park district course. That was a joke, you guys. Uh, NWSRA observations, a couple of pictures about things that we saw. On the left, um, that parking sign, I know that this is a picky, picky, picky thing, John. But parking signs are supposed to be within five feet of the stall. When we did this work in 2018, that has sits changed and they are six feet now. Uh, so depending on the width of that sidewalk, that may or may not be compliant. Slopes in parking and access aisles cannot exceed 2.08% or let's just round it up to 2.1%. This is a really hard uh, measure to meet. Here, you can see with the digital level that it's at 2.7%. We will often, if it is 2.2, cite construction tolerance and say, leave it as is, but at 2.7, uh, we're gonna say that that's gotta be corrected. Doorways, doorways, doorways. A lot of this is, can I get in and out of the door on my own independently? If I use a mobility device or if I'm blind or sight impaired. So, that requires a specific distance between the door and the wall, so that if I'm using a mobility device, I can wheel up to it and safely open it and then get out before it slams on me. Uh, the picture on the right, we see this at hundreds of facilities. In fact, I'm looking around my office and I see a couple of things that have been stacked by the door. But things by the door block maneuvering clearance for somebody who is sight impaired or has a mobility impairment. Reach ranges are another important piece of this. Uh, certainly because of COVID, we've seen a lot of agencies apply hand sanitizer uh containers. There's a couple of things to keep in mind there. They can't be higher than forty-eight inches above the floor. And the piece that can't be higher than forty-eight is the operable part of it. So if there's a a button that I have to push, it's it's gotta be lower than forty-eight inches. Um, those sinks in the picture on the left block access to that if I use a wheelchair. So some of this is pretty simple. It involves, hey, where do we locate soap dispensers and antibacterial uh dispensers as well. Restrooms, restrooms, restrooms. You'd never believe it, but there are twenty-one things we evaluate in a restroom. So the pictures, the two pictures on the left go together. Um, that grab bar in the back has to be centered at twelve inches. It's not, it's off by an inch and a half. The plumbing industry has recognized this and they have created flexible flange mechanisms for floor mounted toilets. That would not help this wall mounted toilet. So this is gonna require or would require a relocation of that back grab bar by just a little over an inch. Uh, the seat height is also off. I believe it is at twenty one to twenty-two. Uh, even though there is a thicker toilet seat on that, that's a relatively simple adjustment. So those are some of the things that we saw. Obviously, we're not trying to give you a a deep dive into this. When people with disabilities were fighting for the ADA to be passed by Congress, they said their mantra was nothing for us without us. So we can go out and measure the dimensions, but we really wanted to hear from you about your own uh preferences and priorities. So from a next steps perspective, you're gonna hear a report about where staff have made changes and what the plans are for that. Um, and I am gonna emphasize that staff continue implementation. The awareness of accessibility issues at NWSRA is off the charts. And certainly, a transition plan, it's a legal requirement, but it it also demonstrates the commitment to access that NWSRA has. So I think I would just ask you, what are your preferences? Is there a certain type of asset that you think is more important? I used parking and the elevator earlier, but is restrooms, are restrooms a more important piece? Um, what do you think about the busiest sites, not for NWSRA necessarily, but for your own park districts? And are there other factors? So Tracy, believe it or not, I'm gonna stop talking and I'm gonna invite the audience to share any thoughts.
What are you seeing? Um, let's see, in here, hey, Trouble, thank you for all the support. I have to run and pick up my my other kiddo now. Um, we're gonna open the floor to see if there are any, what's your feedback? Um, if we were talking about again what John was saying about access, it could even be transportation. Um, what is it? Is there anything that you can think of off the top of your head? Um, that you would really like us to um be thinking about in terms of more accessible? We heard the elevator and was it a commercial? It is not a commercial sized elevator, business sized elevator um, that we have at the Vogli House. Um, again, our biggest challenge is, um, and we did work with WT on that. Um, the biggest challenges were how could we put an elevator into a historical green, uh greenhouse, Lord, uh farmhouse uh to reach, oh, cause we're doing a greenhouse next, um, to reach all three floors without taking up all the space that we would need for programming. Um, so that was the challenge um with that.
Uh, I can tell you, Tracy, the the thing with elevators too. I mean, the, what's interesting about Vogli is that it's an existing facility. If if you were building something completely new, you would have an elevator that is the proper size
Yep.
for a gurney to be in. That's the easiest way to think of it.
Yep.
But in an existing site, especially, I don't know if anybody has been in the Vogli building. I I can't overstate its age. So it was technically infeasible to put a
Full size.
A three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand dollar elevator and then not because of the cost, but because the building structurally would not have been able to handle it.
We we worked with the wonderful engineers um at at John's firm and it was coming up with that compromise. So I hope that addresses it. Was it Gail? I'm not sure who had that. Oh, Shirley. Yeah. Does that help a little bit? Um.
The thing the staff said, sometimes it's all the same.
Yeah.
An interesting concept, you know, topic. I'm fine, I just they re, the staff raised the question, so.
Yeah, yeah. I think, you know, staff, a lot of times they're not, especially the that aren't full time, weren't a part of the project and and building it and oh my gosh, and trying to figure out where the elevator is gonna be for all the other family members and staff that are on there. Um, our last programming space was in the Hoffman Estates and it was an existing farmhouse, three story. Um, and like John said, that was like historic. I mean, it was been there forever, ever, ever, ever. And so here we come. We're like, sure, we'll take it, but trying to figure out how to make it all accessible. It has a ramp, if you drive by it, that um, my goodness, it is the same size as the house because it had to have all these, but we turned it into each landing area, which I thought was genius that WT did, and created lookout spots. So i- it's beautiful. You can stop. We have chairs there and and you can stop and look out. So um, it worked out. It worked out. And now, isn't it funny? Now that I'm so used to it and people are used to it, we don't get as many comments about, oh my gosh, the ramp is as big as. But so we put the elevator inside and we put the ramp on the outside that goes all the way up to the third floor. Um, we knocked down walls to so that, because there was a lot of little rooms and and John remembers it. It was a lot of little rooms and hard to maneuver around for staff and and for the clients. And so we did a lot of knocking down of walls and um, I remember
Well, it was, it was an old house. It was an old
It was an old house, yeah. Yeah, it wasn't meant to do what we're doing, but we made it work and it's gorgeous inside. It's absolutely gorgeous. So if you haven't had a chance to look at it, what is really, um, we we did not make the very front of it accessible. Um, and we had a choice. Our money kinda ran out. Um, so the side is, you know, and that's really the entrance. The front is really not the main entrance, but eventually I would love for that to be, we couldn't figure out how that was gonna work, but we'll figure something out. Um, so thank you for for that feedback. Any other feedback as far as what, you know, what you would wanna see?
Why was the ramp done? Was that you have a second access point to get out or?
Yes, yes. It's if when we did it because it is um, um, the, all of our Pursuit Adult Day sites and Andrea jump in, are approved by the state and we have to have a second, you have to be able to get out if the fire or something, the elevator stops. And so no matter what floor, I have to be able to get everybody out. And so every single one of our sites have to have that second egress in and out of the building. Um, if you remember it, uh, you may not have been at Hanover Park. John worked with us on that too. Um, it was really interesting, beautiful sight, y'all. Had an elevator. It had no accessible way in the building. Okay, so I kept getting in going, well, I love it, but but how do I get in? And so we called them and I'm like, okay, over this moat, I'm gonna need you to build a ramp. And uh, so they're getting used to us coming in with these crazy requests. But yeah, so every single site we go in, if we're lucky enough to have a main floor, Mount Prospect, Rolling Meadows, uh Wheeling, Buffalo Grove, or those are four, they're able to get in right off the main floor. Hoffman and Hanover, we had to have that that second egress out.
And that's a, that whole second floor issue is worth noting. I talked earlier about Congress wanting local governments to do more and to do it sooner than businesses and nonprofits. If Vogli were a YMCA, they would not have to have that second floor be accessible. But Congress wanted, you know, the local government, second floors to be accessible, but a business or a nonprofit does not have to do that.
We chose to have all three. That was, you should have seen the way they looked at us. I was like, oh, no, no. They go, well, you don't need to be in the basement. Yes, we do. Yeah, they need to get to the basement. So we really tried to do that in every site that we open, that participants, staff have access to every part of it. Um, that was important and I think that's why we continue to work with with John's company because they don't, it's not even strange to them. They're just like, well, of course you would want that.
Well, I wouldn't say that. Some of the requests we do get are strange.
Yeah, we ours, we do have some, but you figure it out somehow.
But we can do it.
You dream it up and figure it out.
Well, getting to all floors is important to the person that would be excluded otherwise.
Exactly, exactly. So that was important. Uh.
We had a great comment in another town hall from a nonprofit administrator who was talking about and that nonprofit serve people with cognitive impairments.
Okay.
But he made a point of saying, you know, physical access isn't just for people who use a mobility device. He said it allows such independence if somebody who has a cognitive impairment can go up to a service counter and it's at the right height and they can transact business on their own without having to have an adult or a staff member going there with them. So don't think it's just physical, people with physical impairments who benefit from it. Everybody benefits from it because of the independence aspect of the ADA.
Mm-hmm.
Tracy, I'm sorry, I think I cut you off there.
No, you're fine. No, that's perfect. Anyone else have any thing that they'd like to add or you want us to consider? I'm looking, Gail, Maureen.
TB had a comment in the chat. Thank you to everyone at NWSRA for providing quality activities to our daughter. Leaving the meeting now. Have a great evening.
Wonderful, wonderful. Dan, did you have anything that you can think about as far as access or accessibility that you would like us to think about, consider?
Oh, um, I just think with my son, um, it's difficult. There's a lot of the programs are afford, in terms of ratio, are four to one or to some, in in um, four to one ratio or I I think the, I think more my issue, my son is ambulatory, so it's a different issue. Um, I I think it's more issue of staffing and and I understand uh, what i- i- is staffing is it's serving the disability community, staffing, I think, has always been difficult in my understanding. You guys maybe could fill me in on more, maybe since post pandemic, it seems like it's affected staffing even more. So I I would like ways, if if there's ways for NW, NWSRA to get more staffing, uh, that would be very great. There would be more opportunities for my son. Um.
Mm-hmm. What programs have your son, what specific programs have you looked at registering for him? Do you know or?
Um, I know, for example, the uh afternoon club he was in and I didn't register like immediately. Next time I will, of course. But uh, uh, but he is in a, thankfully is in one Saturday program. Um, and I guess they combined it now. Um, again, probably related to staffing.
Well, I think it's also numbers, yeah.
The numbers, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and and it's, and I you know, so I I don't have the notes in front of me, but I I know there's, there was a grassroots organization to to see about recruitment, about getting more and more people. Um, uh, whatever, I don't have, I wish I don't have
Well, let me see if I can help you out a little bit. I think I know what you're talking about. So one, so for all the families to 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 recognize, um, even though our let let, how do I start this? And Andrea, I'm gonna have you jump in too. We provide everything from one to one to one to four. Okay, in the Pursuit Adult Day, that's a little bit more unique. In that, we don't do that alone. We do that with Clearbrook. And so we, we can provide one-on-one, we can provide one to four. We have so many slots for our one-to-one um, at each site. Okay, so that's, that's one issue. In our programs, one thing that we recommend is all of our programs will provide a one-on-one if that is needed. Um, so that's all of our programs. Um, so if your son requires a one-on-one, we'd have him do um, an assessment with our team and determine the 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 level of need. But understand in our programs, they're generally, a lot of them now are smaller. Um, we are finding that after COVID. Um, they may be a one to four, but there's enough staff in there that if a one, some people need it. We call it hurdle help. You don't need a one-to-one every second of every minute of that time, but you need it during X time or you need it during this. So we can provide everything to that. So that's where I would highly recommend talking to the staff. Rachel, Hups Handles, um, all of our programs um that are in the brochure and she can help you and then we can assess and determine. Um, now, as far as, so if you're registered, we're not gonna turn you away and say, oh, we can't find a staff for you so that you can. Um, that's not how we roll. Now, we may not add an additional group or we may combine group because this group has four participants and two staff. And over here, we need some additional staff, so we may combine. So there may be more participants in the program, but we've combined so that we can utilize the staff to our best ability. So that means that staff can rotate and be with that one-on-one because these other five can follow verbal directions and they don't need that one-on-one hurdle help. Um, so that's really left up to our certified staff that will determine a lot of that.
Okay.
After COVID, um, staffing for any human service, um, Clearbrook, we were just, we had a call with them last week. We have another one tomorrow. We just met with Little City. Staffing is the number one issue and crisis that all um, agencies that are providing services, I'm gonna speak for people with disabilities have. Um, after COVID, people are not coming back and wanting to work um, in our programs and in our services. Um, some people say it's pay. I think we have a pretty good wage. We, Dar, we start at um eighteen. What's our start?
Our starting wage, which would be someone right in high school, who's talking a sixteen-year-old, would be sixteen dollars an hour. If they've worked any time with people with disabilities, they can get anywhere from between eighteen and nineteen dollars an hour. And that would be volunteering at school and their buddy program.
Talk about college and they're out.
Yes.
They're getting
So when they're out of college, if you've gone gone through four years or whatever the case may be, you could get close to twenty-two, twenty-three dollars an hour. Having that experience working with people with disabilities previously.
So I don't think it's a money thing?
Yeah.
Um, now it's coming down to, we need you parents to use your networks. It's gonna need to come from you guys. You are gonna need to talk to, you know, your daughters and your sons' friends and their, your parents' friend, or your your friend groups to talk about the need we have. Because what we're finding is they don't wanna commit to any long period of time. And as you well know, when they build relationships, we'd like you at least make it through a season. Um, what we're finding now, yeah, I'm available this Wednesday and maybe next, but then I'm gone. Um, and so it makes it, it's challenging and we've really had to change how we do things, but that is our number one. Um, and Dar's saying twenty-one, but I'm telling you right now, I know for a fact from signing off on him, we've cha, we've paid people twenty-three, twenty-five dollars an hour. So it is not um, the pay. It is getting them in the door and wanting to do this work. Um, we've worked with parents and Mike Baker, if you're not familiar, and he's passed legislation where it's to have direct service providers. Um, where in high schools, in their career development programs, direct service provider and therapeutic recreation, which is what all my staff went to school for, um, are part of the curriculum or opportunities for them. So when they graduate high school, they would be certified direct service provider workers and they could work full-time if they wanted, or if they wanna go to college, they could use it as a part-time. Um, so we are working, we've worked with District two fourteen, Tom and Andrea are working with District two eleven. So we're actively trying to get in the high schools. Um, but to be honest, we're competing with, you know, our job is not sexy. I just put it out there. It's not sexy. Um, they wanna work for Ubers and Lifts and Instacarts and things that they can pick when they wanna work and then when they don't wanna work, they don't wanna work. And that's what we're up against because during COVID, that's what people did. And so now coming out of COVID, That's what people did. And so now coming out of COVID, that's still what they wanna do. Um, and that just has created just, um, it's been very, very challenging to get. Um, part-timers in. Any other staff wanna add? Am I missing anything to kinda describe the part-time staff?
No, I think you you summed it up well.
Yeah, we we've even advertised, I mean, at the point, who knew that one of our marketing strategy would be, hey, let us be your gig on the side. I was like, let's use their language, you know, and we got some people that way. Every day we have this little squiggly thing that floats like you having car dealerships because I'm trying to attract people off the street. Um, we've paid for billboards on the interstates. I've gone to every high school, every rotary, every outreach. Um, we're out there. Uh, but but any parents, um, staff that that are earshot, spread the word. You know, I think we're a great place to work and once we can get them in, we can get them. But it's getting them in.
Well, and it's, it's an issue across the country. I I'm gonna tell you about a state that is not necessarily progressive leaning. But Texas was losing employees, the state was, to the private sector. And they bit the bullet. They passed a bill in the legislature, a billion dollars worth of funding, and they gave every state employee. A ten percent raise. So it's systemic. Approaches like that, that some some jurisdictions are trying and they're having some effect. I think there's a demographic issue here too. There are simply fewer under eighteens around, and certainly by twenty twenty-nine. There'll be more people over sixty-five than there are under eighteen for the first time in the history of Illinois. For the first time in the history of America, for that matter. So this problem is gonna be with us uh, for a while.
We're doing a meeting next week where I'm locking the staff in. And we're doing a powell to talk about this. Um, how do we? Continue providing the programs and services while addressing our staffing crisis? How are we gonna do things differently? Where do I need to put my full-time certified staff and where do I get, need to get those program leaders that have that? Special ed background, adapted PE, psychology, sociology, whatever, and they're leading some of those part-time, so. Any suggestions we welcome? Um, anyone you know? Give them, let, just put them on our website and have them apply. We we'd welcome them, so.
One, one question I have, um, as I've reached out to Mike Baker is, i- is there a way to get maybe parents to to? Reach out to high schools in coordination with NWSRA. Uh, I mean, because I like the idea of. I I, what I mean to say, nine out of ten people have no interest, but if you could reach that tenth person consistently. To get the person who's passionate about working with 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 the people with disabilities. That's what I I'm hoping and I and I I would be interested in somehow. Volunteering or whatever to to help spread that word. I just wanna know if you have.
Yeah, I think that it's gonna have to come from parents. Because we're in, and but I think it's parents talking to. If you have a high school student, you're talking to other high school students because they can relate. They know your son or they know your daughter or they know you. And from you, you're saying, hey, you know, if you do this, this means that my son can do XYZ. That's kind of a. That's a, that's a bulk for them. That's personal for them.
Yeah, what I mean to say is, um, I. I only, my other son's a senior in college, so I don't have anybody in high school, but I I would be willing as a parent. To coordinate with other parents and maybe we could be almost like a uh. Like we could be emissaries or whatever the word is. Uh, to to go to college, to high schools and colleges or whatever to for NWSRA to 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 get the word out. And to build interest.
Yeah.
I'd be interested.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is getting in the door. Mind you that. Have gotten back. They just are allowing people in the door now, twenty twenty-two, because remember, we were still barely unmasking in twenty twenty-one.
Right.
Um, and twenty twenty-two, they still weren't letting a lot of outside. So so it's trying to get in in front of those students. They've really, the high schools have limited a lot of that. Uh, and so they don't allow a lot of that. And so now we're creative and we're doing videos. Uh, we sneak them in. Um, so we're doing videos on this electric fly, electronic flyer, so when they do the QR code. We've got a video of that parent you talking about. This is why. So Tom, write down Dan's name. Get his information, cuz he'd be a great, um, and we're trying to do those personal stories from you. To make that.
Okay.
So if they're not letting us physically in, we're like, fine, can we get in virtually?
We get it. I'll be happy to, I would be happy to get involved in any way you you guys see fit and and yeah, I I count me in.
Wonderful, wonderful. I know Tom will grab that. Um, McGovern, what else do you got, sir, before we turn it over to Andrea and Thomas?
Um, just a thought, I, Jim Baumann, B A U M A N N, is one of the editors at the Daily Herald. He, he has written ADA themed articles before. I mean, he, it might be interesting to reach out to him. He and I are kinda friends. If you would like, I would.
That would be great. I'm looking at Thomas. Thomas, write down that name. And let's. I will drive to the man. Starbucks does he like?
He works remote and he moved to Florida, so I'm sure he wouldn't mind that drive.
I, well, I I might need a reason. Florida. I mean, it's work-related.
Road trip.
That's awesome. We need all this. This is great.
I'll reach out to him.
Perfect. We are also, for the parents that are on here. Tom and Rachel, our other superintendent of rec is, we're putting together parent groups. To tackle issues just like this, staffing and and creating ambassadors so that we can do things like, can we video? Can you go to this legislator? Can you? And so that's coming down the pike. Um, where we'll actively have things for um, parents to do with us to to help us through some of these challenges.
So, and I I think this year, reiterate, um, I think parents are the ones that really had. We're huge stakeholders and and we certainly, I I can speak for myself, but. I think we we have the passion to to get get it, get the ball across the end zone, whatever that takes.
We, I agree. I think you guys are the best people to do it and we welcome your input. Tom and Andrea, I'm gonna turn it over to you to go over this. I don't know, what are you guys doing? Survey.
Survey.
Survey for the other sites, so you can hear about all the other sites.
Alrighty, I'm gonna give you guys a nice overview of the survey that we sent out and then Andrea is gonna kinda dig into some of the details here. Just give me one second to. But you see my screen? Beautiful. And everyone can see my screen now, right? The PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Fantastic. Alrighty, so, um. At NWSRA, we love to collect feedback on all of our facility spaces. That just allows us to keep providing the best. Facilities that we possibly can. So on September fifth. We sent out a programming space survey and we collected data from seventy-seven participants who participated in the survey. Uh, this per, this survey is still available on our website, so those of you who have not yet participated and would like the opportunity. Simply just navigate to our website, could contact us and that link is uh, still there. So before we kinda dive into the survey, we just asked the participants to. Um, for a little bit of information. So we collected information on ethnicity. Um, a large number of uh, the people who were white or Caucasian, but what is interesting to to tell. Is that we had a lot of black or African Americans, Hispanic, and um, that big one that we're seeing. Coming from data from the census is um, a growing population of the Asian or Asian American uh, population, so. Um, kind of a quick side note, we um, looked at. Um, we pulled information on our service area from the US Census and the Community Survey. Um, initiatives that we've had and we've kind of seen that same thing. So it's nice to see that the the this survey. Um, is in line with our um, ROI initiative.
Our research and outreach initiative, um, you guys will be seeing that. It'll be posted. And we really dug into who are, who is in our area and who do we need to serve. I just always wanna make sure that. I'm reaching all the demographics that I should.
Thank you. Um, we had um, a heavy focus of females participate in the survey. And uh, we had a pretty uh, wide span of different ages. So I think we had a, we had a decent amount of participants from our Community Adult Day Program, our Pursuit Program. Uh, which is why we probably saw that influx of twenty-six to thirty-five-year-olds, um, but we did have a quite. Um, you know, wide range of participation, which gives us kind of good data to to go off of. The communities that we served, um. We serve seventeen park districts, so we cover a pretty large geographical region. So we did overall have a a pretty good span of participants from a geographical perspective. There were a couple of communities um, that we uh, did miss and that we would like to collect more information on in the future. Of those being Salt Creek Wheeling and River Trails, um, but we are looking to actively um, collect more feedback in those areas. Alrighty, Andrea, I'm gonna pass it over to you to talk about the the data from our different programming spaces.
So as you can see, we received the most responses regarding our Rolling Meadows and Mount Prospect space, but happy to say that all of our spaces. Did receive some responses on um, the programming space survey. So we're gonna start with Buffalo Grove. So for Buffalo Grove, as you can see, um, we really did pretty good overall. So the whole scale was out of five. Um, with four point eight being the average for Buffalo Grove. Um, and overall appearance and accessibility coming in number one um, for Buffalo Grove facility.
And just one thing to note, um, going off of what Andrea said, um, she said we averaged a four point eight. When you look at these bar graphs, um, the orange represents a five-star, um. Five-star responses and then that li- lighter teal color represents four stars, so um. That's just kind of the differentiation in the in the bars that you're seeing on these graphs. Sorry, Andrea.
No, you're totally fine. And then you can see that we had a high rating for how participants and families and stakeholder holders. Feel when they go to the facility by the park district staff, so they feel welcomed and part of the park district. Next is Hanover Park.
And uh, just for those of you who are still on here, Tracy earlier was talking about the the ramp that we had to construct over the moat to get into Hanover. Uh, this is uh, the picture of that moat that she was referring to.
So for Hanover Park, we saw a pretty, an average of about four point six seven out of a five. With accessibility being the number one thing that people appreciated about the facility, of course, it being that ramp. As well as the ability to get in from the ground level through an elevator. Um, and then also overall amenities saw um, pretty high, high um, as well.
Always interesting, McGovern, as you're looking at this, you're seeing the accessibility, the signage. We've gotta figure out.
Yes.
How to do that better.
Yeah, the signage is one of the weakest sets of requirements in the. Illinois code and in the federal requirements too.
And then once again, high scores here for the Hanover Park Park District staff as far as individuals coming into the facility. That were related to NWSRA feeling welcomed. Mount Prospect. Um, Mount Prospect did pretty well as also with a overall rating of about four point five six. You'll see again that their signage was a was a little bit better um, overall. Um, as well as their cleanliness being the top one with accessibility. And also again, another high rating of seventy-six, um, feeling welcomed in the facility space.
I'd like them all to be nineties.
Hundred, I agree.
Like them all to be a hundred, so we gotta figure out how to make people feel uh, welcome at each site.
Rolling Meadows. Rolling Meadows had an overall rating of about four point nine one with technology being the number one. Um, once again, that is where our Dream Lab is out of, so. The technology that clients, participants um, and families have access to between the Dream Lab and our Snoosland Sensory Rooms. As well as our upcoming um, music room that we're doing uh, is state-of-the-art technology, so that definitely was a high point for them. And then this one is definitely, we need to do a little bit of work on, um, but uh, thirty-nine percent for feeling welcomed at the Rolling Meadows Park District. We wanna ensure once again that we are a lot higher than that moving forward. Wheeling Park District had an overall rating of four point eight six. And you'll see there that um, they had a perfect five though on cleanliness, accessibility and overall appearance.
Nice.
So it being one of our newer sites as well, um, definitely is a gem. And then the Wheeling, um, welcomed feeling is at fifty-seven.
Hmm, I gotta work on that too.
Hoffman Estates.
There's the ramp. Okay, and that's just a part. You don't even see the part, but, but there's our ramp. I love it.
Had an overall rating of four point eight six and their cleanliness, accessibility and their overall appearance as well. Was the highest rated. And then they have a pretty high score of seventy-five, um, better than a few of our other park districts for feeling welcome to when it, going into the facility spaces. This one again, though, is a standalone facility space, so it is a lot of um, NWSRA staff interacting with the families majority of the time. And then lastly, we do have our main office. So with our main office, we saw technology and accessibility and cleanliness. Um, overall appearance and amenities all kind of equal in that sense. Um, for the main office with an overall rating of about four point seventeen.
Yeah, we gotta.
And then for um, welcomed in, feeling welcomed when coming into our own facility space, our own main office, we were at a forty-nine.
Yeah.
So there is lots of room for improvement with the facility survey and that is. Why we asked for the survey, so that we can see where we need to put some of our, um. Put some, put something behind to really make sure that our facilities and our um, are welcoming and presentation is top-notch. Alright, so as Tracy had mentioned earlier, we are looking for some community input regarding two of our upcoming um, projects. We are working on a greenhouse out of the Wheeling Park District. How we, yeah. So we do have our programming space at the Wheeling Park District. Attached to that space will be our accessible greenhouse. We are working with the Wheeling Park District to complete this project. It is a phased project. This fall, we will have the pad laid for our greenhouse and then come spring, we will start to build the actual greenhouse. And put the tables and the cooling systems and all of that into the greenhouse. So getting some feedback from community members, um, from you as parents as to things you might see or want for your loved one. When accessing a greenhouse, um, programming as well as um, accessibility.
Any thoughts? We are going to be, um, I know when we have our sensory garden. I I'm about tired of cucumbers and squash cuz we grew a lot of that. And so we are going to be working with a local. Food pantry, so that.
Wheeling Township.
Wheeling Township, and so we'll be working with the Wheeling Township Food Pantry, so things that we grow. Where that's not being eaten in program or, you know, we wanna work with the seniors at the Wheeling as well as the early childhood program. That we are actually um, taking to the pantry. They're very excited and and so are the participants about growing food that'll contribute, but. When you think of greenhouses, is there anything that you're thinking? Well, and there's not a whole lot of accessible greenhouses, so. This has been a an amazing project to do, but is there anything when you're thinking of your loved ones that you'd like to see? Um, in the greenhouse or outside of the greenhouse? We also, phase three is going to be a learning area. So it'll be outside and a natural area, um, sitting where we can actually roll out, um, some of our. Greenhouse structure, we have, what are they? The hydroponics that we're growing in. Um, the water system for growing, and so we'll be able to do some teaching and some natural stuff and uh. Talk about food and growing and planting and all that kinda stuff, but that'll be outside along with the Wheeling Park District staff. They have a whole nature facility staff, um, nature center and outdoor, so we'll be doing some collaboration. I'm I'm really excited about that. But is there any feedback that you may have? McGovern, your thoughts about access in a in a greenhouse?
Greenhouses are one of the other areas that aren't well addressed, greenhouses, skate parks, dog parks. So usually it boils down to having a surface that is firm and stable. Having some planting beds at an accessible height so that. Everybody doesn't have to get down on their hands and knees to. Dig and plant their tomatoes. Signage, I think, is an important part of it too. There are some interesting artificial products, kind of a. Hexagon like bubble mat that rolls out and. You put dirt over it and it remains firm and stable.
Oh, wow.
So if you go to any gardening, like a Home Depot, if you go there this weekend. Uh, they have that kind of a surface, uh, in their garden area. And Tracy, I know what a green thumb you have, so you're probably there all the time, right?
Oh, gosh, yeah. I immediately was like, who is going to keep these plants alive? Because I've killed every plant in my office. When we work together, it would just, it would start beautiful and then it would be a pop. Um, because it would die. So I am not responsible. One of the things that we're really doing is making, well, you know, of course they can get around, but we're looking at beds that or. What tables that they can, they can raise and lower to different heights, um, so we're looking at that. Um, and they can roll out and be used in the teaching area as well as inside. And then all different heights of beds and that they can get between them as well. So not just in front of them, but they can roll between them and I can reach over, um, so we're trying to do some of that too, so. Send us prayers, we don't know, you know, this is when it just gets fun, we, we need a greenhouse. Um, we did a grant, get a grant for this, um, and the people that are granting, this was one of their top. Um, priorities, which is why we got the grant for this, um, sustainable growth and living and then. People with disabilities, and so this was just a win-win, and so we got a grant to build it, so we thought, okay. We're building a greenhouse, so we're pretty excited. Any other feedback on that? Alright, what's our next one, Andrea?
Is our music room. So in our Rolling Meadows Community Center space, we do have a current music room, as you can see. Um, it is time to give it a little love and upgrade it, um, as well as make it a little bit more state of the art when it comes to, um, music rooms. So a place where we can do music lessons, also have small group lessons out of it. And possibly bring in some music therapists, um, and really, really build up our music program as well. So looking for ideas and suggestions, um, regarding anything related to a music room.
I'm sure you're going to tell me there's not a whole lot of this. What's written on music rooms? Nothing.
I, I wouldn't view a music room any differently than I would. Uh, any other room where there are multiple activity opportunities. I mean, certainly. An accessible route is critical. I think it'd be interesting for you to reach out to some of the high schools in the area. Because, gosh, they have everything from pianos to horns to drums that. They wind up passing off to somebody. And there might even be an interest in high school students helping teach.
Yes.
Lead some of the activities.
That's what we're hoping. Um, we're really looking at, there's a system, I don't know how it's going to be built, but this is what we want. Where we have to utilize, this isn't a large space. Um, so we have to be able to have things off the floor, but that can be raised and lowered, and so tracking systems where drums. And that will, you know, it'll come down, I can roll up to it, do whatever, I can stand. Or I can sit as a person, so we're looking at those type of things. Um, we're looking at, of course, you know, the, the spaces where they can have the sound. And have that place where if it's too much, a lot of our, our individuals with autism, um, we have those chairs that can move. It's there in the dream lab, we can move it in here where they can sit and take the doses as much as they can take, but also go into a safe place. Um, we're looking at some things that can be done on the floor so that they can have access to it. Um, so things that you can do with hands, with elbows, with wrist, with feet, with our mouth. Our head, um, anyway, and, and be able to play different types of music, so all abilities, so we're, we're pretty excited. About that. Okay, Darlene, are you going through your section? Of what we accomplished and then we're wrapping up?
Yeah, so, um, John went over all of the points or all of the areas that we actually were to focus on, most, most of them. Um, and we started this project in twenty nineteen, but then the world collapsed in twenty twenty with COVID. So everything got put on hold unfortunately with all the changes that we wanted to make and ensure that we were in compliance with ADA. So I'm happy to say as of right now, pretty much everything is done that needs to be done within the inside of our two, uh, floors. So our bathrooms have been updated, the signs all have been moved, we've improved, you know, toilet seats and. Handrails and things of that nature. Made sure that we have space for wheelchairs, we're not blocking doors, all of that has been updated. Um, we also had to change some window heights to make sure someone in a wheelchair could see through the window because they were a little bit too high for them. So that is done. We are currently waiting for Rolling Meadows Park District. To do their transition plan and they have that planned for the end of this year, beginning of next year, in which case they're taking care of the things that are outside. Because we don't have responsibility over that, that is Rolling Meadows. So they'll be the ones that'll be doing, um, the cutouts for wheelchairs within the, um. The concrete and to make sure that it's accurate and up to ADA specifications, um, making sure that our signs outside are moved and they're within the right. Uh, distance from the stalls and things of that nature that we have the correct handicap, um, spots available and that they are the correct size and. We have room on either side for them, so those are being done by the park district. Um, and we're just, you know, waiting for them to do their transition plan, we did ours before them, so they're doing theirs later on in this year. But then, once that's done, our transition plan that John did for us, um, a couple of years ago will be complete. You're on mute, Tracy.
Sorry, I just saw that. Um, um, John worked with the Rolling Meadows Park District as well. So it really worked nicely, so he did their transition plan and then he did ours, so it's not that they haven't done their transition plan. It's that some of the things that they're implementing that we jointly do together are happening next year, so. What generally happens is a park district will go get their transition plan and then they roll it into their capital plan, which is several years out. And so the parking lot and some of those things are not scheduled to be done until twenty twenty-four. Um, so it was really nice that John did both of them, so he literally did from the parking lot, which is both of our area. Into the building, up into our floor, but did all of the first floor in that because that would be, um, Rolling Meadows Park Districts. As I mentioned before, each park district that we are in has to have a transition plan done. Um, and because we are renting and we don't own the space, I'm going to throw out yet, um, I'm working on that. Um, we don't own the space or it's not condoed, the park district does the whole transition plan for that space. Which would include our area, um. So we don't, we, they're doing that, we can pull that information, um, and we will be working with them. Um, that's why I wanted you on here, John, to see the accessibility stuff that they said about our end. But as he's working with them, he will know to say, I need to see the N W S R A programming space as well and will include that in their transition plan, so. Um, that is our update. Are there any questions, um, that we can address?